Five minutes please. All right. Welcome. Thank you for joining us for the May 2nd, can't believe it's May already, 2016 work session. Couple of announcements, if you please turn your cellphone and vibrate. And is it on cue? Or to silence? In case of an emergency, there are stairs out the door to the right and out the door around the corner to the left, please don't use the elevators. Thank you very much. First up is Mayor Jake Day to talk about our new task force.
Okay. So the, this first item is one of our first, it actually is our first task force. We talked about this at the committees and task forces and boards and commissions discussion a couple of months ago. And this touches on a topic that I think is on all of our minds and really critically important to, I know, each of us. And this is the establishment of the STARC task force, which is the Substance Treatment and Addiction Reduction Team. This is in response to what has been an alarming trend in a rise of overdoses, mostly connected to opioids. As I mentioned in my memo, we've got a, we've seen an alarming rise, 56 so far in April, identified in overdoses. And this is certainly something that each of you at the table has expressed a desire to address. So what, what we wanted to do is, one, acknowledge the, the ongoing work of a lot of organizations in the community and in concert with the COAT program, the Community Outreach Action Team that, that this council has funded in part in partnership with Wycombe County and the State's Attorney and the Health Department. This is pulling together the experts, the resident experts in the area and people who have firsthand experience with these issues and, and pulling them together to advise the city on next steps. And that's why we thought a task force was most appropriate, a nine-month window, which was the original intent and we could certainly something we can extend. And in addition to that, we also thought it was important to protect the identity of certain people who are participating, who are in recovery and that that not be a public conversation. So we, we mentioned in the memo, I mentioned in the memo, some of the organizations that will be included and represented, including Peninsula Regional Medical Center, the Health Department, our own police and fire departments, the substance abuse community center, Dry Dock, Lower Shore Clinic, Salisbury University in Warwick, Jake's Foundation Hudson Health, the Chamber of Commerce, United Way, Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore, Joseph House, State's Attorney's Office, Stop the Violence and Caring and Sharing. And, and we, we want to involve at least those organizations and as well as, of course, representatives from council. So with, with council's consensus, and I'd like to, to ask for that, we'll, we'll start to move forward on this. I know it's something that we can do without legislative process, but I think it's important that we, we know that this is something that council wants to move forward with.
I'm certainly on board with it. I think it's a critical need and arguments could be made if it's this person's responsibility or that person's problem. It's not their problem or our problem, I mean, my problem or your problem, it's everybody's problem. It's affecting all of us. We see it in the resources it's taking up from our police department and a whole lot of other ways, EMS and, and I think it's critically important. But the biggest strain is that it's, that people are dying. And I think we have a responsibility, as you said in your memo, to, to do our part and find out what that part is.
And if I may, you know, it's important to acknowledge that there's a lot of communities dealing with the same thing. It's a national issue. But while there are other communities that are finding parts of the answer, there's not a silver bullet, we recognize that. But if we have, if we pull people together to guide the city of Salisbury and recognizing that there are organizations doing great work out in the community, but if, if we pull organizations together to advise the city of Salisbury on how we should invest our resources and what steps and tools and techniques we should embrace, I think we're more likely to make the right decisions than if we do so without this task force in place.
I think, yeah, I'm supportive of this as well and I hope, the hope is, is that, you know, our ultimate goal is to, is to find, is to streamline the process from the person that needs the help to getting the help as quickly as possible. And certainly our ultimate goal is to have immediate placement into treatment because we know that, you know, some of that, some of that window there where they, they're still out there and they're, they have that ability to have access to, to what, and sometimes it does lead to overdose when they don't get the, the treatment as fast as possible. So I'm hoping that that's, that's, you know, understanding what our ultimate goal is in the end, I think is, is, is at least we can build a roadmap on how to get there.
We may not make it to the next opportunity if we miss the first one. And we know that there are certain pieces that we have to have in place, but we also know that we don't have all of those pieces right now with our partners. And we know that there are big chasms in between those pieces, that we need to make sure if we say, walk in our door and ask for help and we'll help you, that we have the ability to offer the complete continuum of care without any places for them to fall through the cracks.
And it's not a nine-to-five problem.
No.
This is a 24-hour a day, seven-day-a-week problem.
And I feel as though all these entities here could play a vital part in helping deter the drug addiction and what we have, and I really feel is that that, what, one problem creates more than one problem. And I feel as though if we all act now, we could save many lives because we have lost quite a few. So I'm just, I'm all for it, been for it, been waiting for this to happen and now it's happening. I'm on board.
Mr. Irtin, is there anything?
Yes.
Could I just ask one question or clarify one thing? In my mind, I know that a lot of people are saying, we're doing a lot of talking about this, when are we going to see action, what are we going to do? Now, if we hit on something during, if the task force hits on something that we can do right away, we're not going to wait until the end of the nine months to do anything. If we find things that we could do along the way that can start to make changes, I would expect that we would jump on the opportunity if it fits.
I would just say you've proven your willingness with a budget amendment to fund the COAT program, you know, and I think we've proven ours. I think together, we've already, you know, shown that we're willing to take action on something if, if the opportunity arises.
I just wanted to put that out there because I do want people to know that we, this is not a delay, this is not more talk, this is finding, making, finding the answers, make sure we're taking the right actions. So when we see those actions, we'll take them.
And doing this too makes people think that we're more serious than they think we are. Because I think a lot of these people that are doing the drugs and stuff, they're not taking it serious enough for me, you know? And I think by us stepping forward, doing what we have to do, bring some realization that, hey, they're not going to tolerate no more, Salisbury's not going to tolerate it anymore. And they're stepping forward to help us with our addictions now, you know? And, you know, sometimes we have to be that stepping stone for people. We have to step out of our comfort zones and sometimes I think we're really sometime afraid to, but we have to step out of our comfort zones to help these people because it's not only affecting just the average people, it's affecting everyone. And what affects one person affects everyone, period. So I, Jake, I, I'm not going to say anymore, I'm just ready for it to happen.
I think we have consensus. Thank you. Next item up is the combining of the Recycling Advisory Committee and the Sustainability Advisory Committee. I have Julia is doing this.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Before you is a resolution and memo to combine the Recycling Committee into our newly-formed Sustainability Advisory Committee, known as the Green Team. We currently have a Recycling Advisory Committee. It has, I might have misled you, has one person on it, but they haven't met in some time now. And this new committee, the Sustainability Committee, has a really great group of passionate people that keep asking me, when are we going to start, when are we going to start? And I think we have enough people now to get them going. So I think they can focus on recycling along with those other larger sustainability issues and that this Recycling Committee is no longer needed with the narrow focus of recycling.
And the bylaws were coming in, that was not the one. Okay. It's the other one that had questions on the bylaws.
Well, yeah, there was, I was on the Recycling Committee for a few years and it just, people just dropped off and there was never any interest. And I think it was, there were some issues. I think part of it was you had to be from a certain quadrant and I think people were confused about what quadrant is what. And so, but hopefully, I think it, it needs to go beyond just recycling and I think this is a good, a good step in.
Can I just ask, and I think it was, Jim, you would probably know better than anybody here, it was started back when we first started recycling as a city, wasn't it?
Well, it was.
Like even, you know, many, many, many years.
It was done, there was a, there was a study done, I think it was under Mayor Tillman, and out of this, out of this, they advised us to have a Recycling Committee. And so this was probably around 2005, 2006.
It says 2007 in the resolution.
Yeah, it was, yeah. Well, that's when the Recycling Committee was started, but before that, there was an Advisory Committee that. And when I, when I got on it in 2009, the first meeting I went to, there was like 20 people in attendance.
Oh, wow.
And then it was just after that.
Well, the question arises, what do you want it to do? If you're not going to make recycling mandatory, then the people who show up who were from each quadrant that are recycling phenoms, amazing people go, if you're not going to make everybody do it, what, what is this for?
Yeah. And there was a lot of frustration because they, there were some things that they were trying to recommend and at the time, you know, the things they were recommending never, never happened.
Or they were too expensive.
They were too expensive, but the problem was there was no communication back to the committee. And I think a lot of them got frustrated and ended up, I think at one point, I was the only one on the committee. And then, and then, you know, you would show up for a meeting and, oh, the meeting was canceled and there was no communication and.
I could see how that would be very frustrating, but we do have an enthusiastic group of people now that want to look at it at a broader spectrum and, and help to figure out where that fits into the, the whole scheme of things.
And I think, I think that's kind of really, it needs to be more than just recycling. It has to be, you know, many issues that, that we have that we can address.
Do you have consensus? All right, did you have anything?
I'm fine, no. I'm fine with it.
All right. You okay with that?
No. That's all right.
Okay, well, I'm okay with it, so we have consensus. Might be helpful to share your concerns with mayor or administration too.
I appreciate your advice. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is the Youth Development Advisory Committee. Is that going to be mayor or Ms. Glantz?
Yeah, it is.
Flip a coin.
Okay. So going back to our presentation a month or so ago about committees, the first one, the first new advisory committee that we talked about creating was this one. And so this is the resolution that would actually establish it. This is the legislation that would actually establish it. The, you can see the, the details. The intent, of course, is to, once again, create a, this is a standing committee, so this would create the advisory committee that would guide us on all of our activities related to young people in the city, from advising us on community centers to advising us on youth employment, to any other additional activities that we choose to take on in the future. And we've, as I wrote in the legislation, this is, this is an opportunity for us to acknowledge that, you know, in the face of declining crime, in the face of declining arrests, we see rising juvenile arrests. Throughout the election, you know, every single council candidate, council person that was elected and mayoral candidate addressed, I think, a desire and a concern to serve our young people as a city. We also recognize that we need additional guidance on the curfew that we've discussed and a lot of other things that we all want to address in addition or even beforehand. So this is a rather large body because I think we need a variety of, of people from a variety of communities and even ages involved in this conversation. And I think that this is, this is one of those opportunities for us to cast a wide net and have a, a very, very diverse group involved in, in guiding the city. So this is a pretty straightforward legislation in terms of what it creates and the advisory committee will, as with other advisory committees, guide us on legislative as well as policy decisions that we will, at a later stage, incorporate in budgets and bring to council. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just a couple of things that I noted in the resolution itself. The title isn't the full description like we usually see, Resolution of the City of Salisbury. Just probably somebody.
Admittedly, this didn't go through, through Mr. Tillman's office.
The other thing I would suggest in section 1D where it talks about quorum, we ran into with like the park committee where they have varying numbers and this one has anywhere between 15 and 25. I think they ended up putting something in their bylaws, like a quorum shall be 51% of those that are presently appointed.
Okay.
So you're not using the 25 or the 15 number. If you've only got five appointed so far, they can still come up with a quorum.
Yep.
And then on line 83, the first word, it says this, I mean, these, I think maybe it's supposed to be this committee.
Yeah.
That's it. Oh, did, are they going to do their bylaws after they form themselves or?
You know, I know we have a, a number of standing advisory committees that don't have their own bylaws.
Okay. We've seen some when they were established now come up with.
I mean, this establishes bylaws in the, you know, in the legislation. So we could certainly enable them or empower them to amend that as necessary, but I, I'd prefer to just see you all make those changes at the council table rather than.
Okay. I thought I read it in there somewhere. I can't find it, I doesn't seem to find it now, so I probably dropped it.
Well, it does say on line 27, it says bylaws of the City of Salisbury Youth Development Advisory Committee. And then it goes down to some sections.
Okay. That must be where I saw it.
It does.
So these are the bylaws, so it's already there. Okay, good. Thank you. Strike that last question.
Are you, I would also suggest trying to include maybe a representative from the Board of Education. And then I believe also the Board of Education has a student, every year they have one student that serves on the Board of Education, non, I think it's a non-voting member, but I would at least maybe try to include that student as well.
We, and we, we did intend for a representative of the board and I've made initial outreach, though. The incoming superintendent has agreed to serve if, if we appoint her. So I intend to and hopefully all will support that. So she's, she's said she's willing to, you know, I, I thought that was pretty generous. You know, I'm sure she'll have other responsibilities and things tugging at her attention, but she's said she's willing to, to serve on the committee.
And I do like the, the point on line 33 that you're giving the youth the opportunity to interact and have some voice in what goes on in their, I guess, the youth developmental center or in the city of Salisbury. So I really, I like that, I really do. Because they need to have a voice. They've been shut out for so long. How do we know what the youth want if we never ask them what they want and we just go on what we think they want or need? So that's very important.
Sure. Yeah, I, I think having that direct conduit is important. There are also, you know, some people whose names are forward as well, you know, who I think have themselves developed a, a lot of trust with young people. Two of them are sitting in the room, Martin Hutchinson and Jer Michael Mitchell. People that I know have a direct relationship with a lot of young people in the community. So I think, but having that direct voice as well, having young people involved, I think we've already seen that there's a real power in that.
Madam Counsel, President, my only question is, is the curfew, what will be done with all the work that was done on the curfew prior? Is that going to be folded into this committee and start again? Or committees being in charge of legislation that are this big mean that no legislation comes out? So I'd like to know, should we expect curfew legislation before this gets started? What, what do we tell the public?
Well, I would say that, you know, it, it has been the result of what I think, you know, those public conversations that we had, that the curfew itself was, was clearly secondary as a public desire to the other activities that we undertake as a city, you know, investing in the community centers, things like that. So I think it remains a secondary issue, but, but I, I think it's something we can certainly empower this committee to address and that was my intent. I don't think that it's acceptable, you know, from my perspective, for any committee to have a charge and for them to not produce anything. So if we charge them to produce a recommendation on the curfew in follow-up to the work that went into it in the past, and if that's one of our expectations, I, I promise you, I won't find acceptable no, no response or no legislation created. But I, I also think that it's, it's jumping to a conclusion to think that they will recommend that that's the, the route that we get.
Then I'm not sure I clearly heard what everybody else heard during those meetings.
And I think the council, you know, felt the same way previously in the past and, you know, I, I still feel that way, that what I heard was that that's secondary and primary is what we're doing to invest in our kids.
I went to, I went to every, every meeting on the curfew. And depending on where the meeting was, there was some groups that were strongly in favor of a curfew and then you go to another meeting and there is absolute outright opposition to it. And then I went to another meeting and there was, was about 50/50. So, and, you know, all of us were out knocking on doors and, and again, it depended on where you knocked on doors and who you talked to, it was about 50/50. So, you know, make, and that's kind of a, and that makes it a tough decision, especially to go, you know, if it was overwhelmingly, everything we heard was, we want a curfew, you know, that makes it a little bit easier. But when you've got, like you said, there's other issues that were brought up that were even beyond the curfew, where youth employment and, you know, other activities and stuff, I think that.
I'd just call it, I'm sorry.
No, I mean.
I'd call it an unsettled question.
Yeah.
I think, I think what we should do is give this a chance before we try to impose a curfew because we've never given these kids an opportunity, you know, the, the entire city. We've never backed them any kind of way, but we want to punish them. So we have to give them some kind of opportunity. Don't look at me like that. We have to give them an opportunity to get on the right path before we try to punish them severely. So I think, you know, because, I mean, when you go to imposing curfews, you got to think about parents, money. What do, what do you, what lengths do you go to? I mean, you punishing the parent, you're punishing a parent who doesn't have money. You know, you're putting fines on parents who don't have, have money to pay fines. So what do you do, lock the parent up, then the parents without a child?
We never got to the point of considering that.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
Saying that out loud isn't necessarily the truth and to be perfectly clear, there are children out at 3 o'clock in the mil, in the morning stealing. So I understand in between 3:00 and 6:00 p.m. after school, I understand that, I understand parents working. But we did, through statistics, narrow down a group of the same ones over and over and over again. And I think we, what we heard during the conflict resolution expert that came in is that we understood that, that finding people wasn't going to do a difference. I, I clearly remember Mark Thompson, you know, talking about if we could get the community center open and use that as a place to bring that kid to reunite with the parent, to discuss the issues that are going on.
I remember that exactly.
What I'm worried is that with a group like this that is only required to meet between six and how many times a year? That the hard question, the hard question doesn't get answered because it's going to the committee. That's my concern. I'm not, I don't know what the answer is because legislatively, we haven't seen that answer, but I am worried that what this does is, is, is put that answer years. I mean, we had to get six people to agree on something, now we're talking about 15 to 24 people agreeing on something. That's what I thought those meetings would public before.
They didn't answer the question.
But it still didn't answer. It still didn't.
Well, I'm not saying the public is supposed to answer the question, I'm saying we're supposed to answer the question.
Mr. Mayor.
I, I would say that's not the hard question. I would say that's the easy one. The easy solution is say, lock everybody up who walks outside at night. That's the easy solution.
I don't think we've said that.
Well, that, that's, but that's exactly what it does. If you're, you know, if you're.
But we heard through curfew plus or curfew extra, we heard all the things that the ministers were telling us, that some of the young people that were in there were telling us, that the grandparents that were scared to come out of their house at night were telling us. And I thought our goal was to try and find.
It, yeah.
The, the middle. But, and I'm not, I'm not saying this can't do it, but I'm saying this doesn't do it on the timeframe that I think the residents are expecting us to find that, to find the answer to.
Well, what I got out of those meetings, my takeaway from those was a lot of frustration with what was happening with kids in the streets in the middle of the night, kids running around doing mischievous things, destructive things and not really knowing what the answer was. And someone said, let's do a curfew and, okay, yeah, we'll try it, we'll try anything, kind of an attitude. It's not our first choice, but it seemed to be the only thing that was on the table at the time because how do we afford the community center? How do we afford these projects? How do we, they didn't seem attainable to most people. And so, okay, let's do the curfew until we can get a handle on this and figure something out, is what my takeaway was. If we can figure something else out and we can do things, I mean, if they're out tearing things up and breaking things, they're already breaking the law. So you already have the, the right to arrest them or to detain them and take them back to their parents and, and have that accountability. But just being outside, if we wear them out during daylight hours, maybe they'll go to sleep at night.
Well, if I may, on two points. One, to Mr. Bodas' point, the, the intent, and I, actually, I think it was you said it, maybe Ms. Jackson said it, but the, the intent around, you know, or the original discussion about community centers did, I think, originate in, inside of the curfew conversation. And there was a discussion about, you know, where do we, well, how do you house them? How do you supervise them until parents can pick them up? And what do you do with them? I mean, are they productively engaged or, or not? You know, even if it's at night or, you know, are they just hanging out? Are they, you lock them in a cell in the police station? I mean, there was a lot of, I think, disappointment in that answer. And so the police chief has continued to seek to combine those two things. And that is, that remains, I think, a potential solution if it's a curfew plus model, you know, and I, you know, I personally, and I won't, you know, I'm not hiding this at all, I personally prefer figuring out the plus stuff first, not second. And I, and I realize that's a, just a sequencing question. I don't think that a, a curfew is, you know, all-around evil. It's just, you know, a sequence of things. If you get the, if you get the plus stuff right, you might learn that you don't need the curfew. And that's, that's my question. But the, the second thing in response to Mr. Irtin, just by appointing the police chief to this committee as a staff representative, my intent there is to allow her the space to figure out the best way to combine those things. Because I can tell you from our staff meetings, you know, one of the things that appears in her presentation on, under legislative priorities every week is curfew legislation. It is, it, there is a strong voice for that from the law enforcement community. It's not going to go away. You know, it, it's going to be there and I think it's incumbent upon her to work with the community to figure out what that answer looks like.
And even from police officers, and again, it's about 50/50 with the officers I talked to. You know, a lot of them are confused on if there is a curfew, you know, is it, is it, and they, and they have somebody that may be underage. So again, there's a lot of training that has to go with it and talking about civil liberties and, and personal freedoms. liberties and, and personal freedoms. And, you know, is it, is it a, if I see someone that I think that might be, and I try to approach them and they run, then now, am I, like, do I have to go all out and chase this person through yards and, and stuff? Where then, at that point, you increase the risk of the officer being injured. And so, 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 and that, that, you know, there's all sorts of questions that came out, even, you know, during these discussions about stuff like that. And so I think we don't want to, I think it's something that, you know, if we do it, we have to have clear guidelines on how do we enforce it, and, and, and the actions of, of what are we expecting our officers to do.
Hey, just in line eight and nine, we admit that more teens, more juveniles are being arrested, so I.
There'd be two ways to interpret that data, but you're right. It's an issue.
And I think it will remain a legislative priority for the chief and for law enforcement and for all of us, as long as.
I agree with that.
It is a problem. But if the, doing the plus first helps resolve or minimize the problem to a manageable level, then maybe we don't need it. If we do that and we still need it, then we have.
We do it.
Proof positive that that is an issue, and, I mean, that that is necessary, and we have a place to take them when they are detained.
But what do children do when they have nothing to do?
Not anything good.
Getting to mischief. So we've given them nothing to really do. So this is what I, this is what this advisory committee is for, to create activities for our young people to do. I mean, and if, if you've got nothing to do, then you say, out of mind is a devil's workshop. So these kids are going out here finding something to do. We're grown people, and be for real, when we're bored, what do we do? Mischief, still. I mean, so just be real, these are kids we're dealing with. I mean, and I don't make excuses for young people. I don't. I don't make excuses for people, period. But there is nothing for them to do. When I grew up, it was always something to do. Our parents always kept us in something. There was always the Salvation Army. It was YMCA, it was other things that we had to do. We had the playgrounds and parks that were thriving and always had activities. That's been shut down to actually nothing now. It's been minimized. So there's really no recreation for our young people. So, I mean, I think what we should do is just give this a chance before, like you, Laura, said, before we go to do step A before we go to step B, and see how it works. And then if it doesn't work, then we work on the other part of it and do what we, what needs to be done. But, I mean, we, no, we're not going to save every youth in Salisbury. We're not. But for the ones who want to be saved, let's save them. And that's just how I feel.
So it sounds like you're on board with.
Yes, I am.
This committee, Mr. Boda, in charge. I am. So we have consensus. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure we'll have many more discussions, what comes out of this and where we go from there.
We'll send you names next work session.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. That is all that we have on the agenda. Are there any council discussions, anything else we need to bring up? Very nothing. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.